The Pinkyville City Council Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Pinkyville Chamber of Commerce, will be web-streamed Tuesday at 7:00 PM. A live webcast is planned and may be viewed at citylinkTV.com under the Illinois Pinkyville Press channel. A link to the video web-streaming will be also available on the Pinkyville Press's Facebook page. The candidate forum conducted at the Pinkyville Community High School is an opportunity for voters to get to know the candidates and their platforms prior to the general election on April the 7th. Pinkyville Community High School Principal Dustin Fauch is expected to present questions from the public for the candidates to answer. The live broadcast is going to be made possible through Piatt Funeral Homes, the primary sponsor of the Pinkyville Press's web-stream. Keep pressing on.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Forum. If the candidates would like to come find a seat up on stage... Tonight's moderator, question-answer, is going to be Dustin Fauch. If you want to come up here, Mr. Fauch?
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. The Pinkyville Chamber of Commerce would like to welcome you all to the 2015 City Council Candidate Forum. The Chamber is pleased to offer this forum to allow the candidates to share their views and to help the community get a chance to better know each one of these candidates. We have an overwhelming amount of questions submitted and would like to thank each person who took the time to send those in. Due to time limitation tonight, we are unable to ask the candidates all of these submitted questions, but I encourage you to read the candidate interviews that were published in both the County Journal and the Pinkyville Press, which covered many of the questions that were submitted. The copies of the paper and the County Journal articles are available here tonight if you guys should check those out. There will be a 10-minute break at the halfway point tonight, where the Chamber will be taking additional questions that must be submitted in writing. Back here, we're typically there are no cards and pens, and if you do have an initial question that you would like to ask tonight, we do welcome those questions if you would just fill in those questions out at the 10-minute break. We will begin with a brief introduction for each candidate, then we will ask the questions you all received ahead of time or the questions you will get tonight. We will go in alphabetical order for the introduction and reverse alphabetical order for the first question. After the first question, we will start with specific questions for each candidate. The time for each question will also be announced when the question is read. We do have one of our students with us tonight, Jacob Miller. He is our timer. There are specific timelines for each one of the questions, 60 seconds, 90 seconds. Jacob will let each one of the candidates know when it's time. All right? So if we could listen to Jacob and keep everything on track, that would be greatly appreciated. So, at this time, each candidate has a one-minute introduction, and we will be starting... Is Ruben Davis or Kevin Hanks available? We will be starting introductions with Joseph Holder, who is running for Commissioner of Streets and Public Improvements.
Oh, Ruben? Okay, I'm sorry, Ruben?
Ruben Davis is in the house, folks. Here we go. We'll be starting with Ruben Davis, who's running for Commissioner of Public Property.
Hello. My name is Ruben Davis. I've lived in Pinkyville virtually my entire life. My parents relocated here to the military back when I was about eight, nine years old. Basically, part of my adult life, I worked in the city of Pinkyville for approximately 26 and a half years. At that point, I left Pinkyville, took employment with Perry County Roads on the highway system and the Unit Road District, and I'm still working there yet today. Basically, I pretty well know the residents of Pinkyville. I know the system, what the needs are from my experience of working there and being a resident here all these years. I figure I'm basically doing my retirement through this area, and I'd just like to continue to do that and see the area grow with that. Thank you.
Next up, we have Joseph Holder, running for Commissioner of Streets and Public Improvements.
Thank you. Welcome to everybody tonight. My name is Joseph Holder, and I'm married to Judy Holder, and used to be Judy Walker. Her parents run the Walkers Five and Nine store here in Pinkyville for many years. Most of you probably remember that. After I completed school, I moved back to Pinkyville, and I started a business here because I love the community and got involved right away with the Chamber of Commerce. Served on the Chamber of Commerce for probably 12 years, going up to President, and in '75, that was the first year that they started making the Presidents turn two years instead of one. So, anyway, served on, and I've served on numerous committees. I love the city. I always liked it and tried to do my best. And I guess... Can you hear that? Oh, hang up. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Sammy Paradona, running for Commissioner of Streets and Public Improvements.
Hello. I'm Sammy Paradona. Most of you probably know me. I've been a resident of Pinkyville all my life. I have two children, Klein and Kelsey. I previously been on the City Council in 1995, 2003 as a Public Property Commissioner of Gas, Water, Sewer Department, City Bar, County City Pool. I am planning on working in Department of Corrections now. But I'm retiring, December 31st this year, and would like to be back, get back involved in the city business. I'm running for Street Commissioner. Just have a lot of free time as long as I get back involved. I have a degree from Rimway, Associate Degree of Business, and I'm right next to Pinkyville High School. That's all. Thank you.
Next up is James Schillinger, running for Commissioner of Public Health and Safety.
Good evening. Thank you for coming, Jim Schillinger. I've spent over 40 years combined looking for the city. Third seven years as a teacher, about 10 years as a part-time policeman. I am currently on the zoning board, and previously to that, when the city were a policy man in the old early 70s, I was one of the members of the Policy Manning Committee. Why I'm running, I don't know, but I think there's a lot of things for the city that we can improve on a little bit, and just like a shot to try. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Robert Spencer, running for Mayor.
My name is Robert L. Spencer. For years, I have been working as the District Conservation for the Natural Resource Conservation Service. I retired after 42 years with the service. I started in Tennessee back in 1970 and went to school at Tennessee State University, completing my BS in agriculture, in my young natural sciences, and some postgraduate work at the University of Illinois in Champaign. I came here in 1977, and I have worked with every Commissioner and every Mayor since I've been here, both local government, state government, I've been there. I have assisted cities with grants, and I continue to look at that avenue as a source of fun. But I retired, and I didn't want to stay home with my wife, and we were so problems. So, I decided to move.
Next up is David Stone, running for Commissioner of Public Property.
I'm a lifelong resident of Pinkyville. I was born and raised here, married, former Mary's husband. We have a 40th anniversary this year. We've got two kids, three grandkids. I worked for a consolidation coal company for 25 years, got laid off with demise in the coal industry, went back to school, got my bachelor's and finished my period. Factories, worked in three, four factories in the area, times being one. I've been Commissioner of Public Property for eight years, and I'm proud of the work we've done. I always told my wife when I retired, I was going to run for Mayor of Pinkyville. That was always my desire to do that. After I got where I am now, I found out I didn't want to be Mayor anymore. A lot more to it than what I thought, but it's not me, Eric. But that's it.
Next is Fran Thomas, running for Mayor.
Hi, Fran Thomas. I am the Crescent City Clerk. I've been City Clerk for 32 years. I've served as City Clerk as the longest in the history of Pinkyville. My mother graduated from this high school in 1942. My son graduated in 1989. My roots are in Pinkyville. My mother owned a little clothing store on the square back in the late 50s and early 60s. My dad was the aged yard master for the Reserve Pacific Railroad. The store, the building where my mother's store was is no longer there, but Donald sits there now. The depot and roundhouse that my dad was the aged yard master for the Reserve Pacific Railroad is gone. It's gone. But I still think there is hope for Pinkyville. I think we have spirit. I think we have drive, and I think we can make things happen in Pinkyville.
At this time, Bill Stotler is unable to be in attendance. I'm Maria Staker from Bemis, running for Commissioner of Accounts and Finance. My name is Bill Stotler. I'm running for the position of Commissioner of Accounts and Finance. I would first like to thank everyone for caring enough about our community to be here tonight, and the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this forum. I would also like to apologize if I could not attend tonight's event. As a commercial airline pilot, my schedule was set long before I was invited to be here. I assure you, though, I plan to physically attend the regular council meetings. Serving this community is too great a privilege not to give it my full attention. Before I can answer any questions posed on the candidates, here's a little about myself. I'm a lifelong resident of Pinkyville, a husband, a father. I have two children, Claire and Jenna, and my wife, Kim, has three, Justin, Emily, and Ben. We are sort of a brainy bunch family. I am the son of Dr. Gene and... Thank you. I didn't want to mispronounce that. Dana Stotler, and a partner with other family members in the Stotler Drug Company. I, along with my partners Bruce Goff and Carl Leary, built and operated the 204 Market for 10 years. The Chamber asks us to identify Pinkyville's greatest asset. Thank you.
The next question is a question for all of the candidates. The question is, and if you need me to repeat the question, I'll be more than happy to as we go through these. Again, the order of this will be in reverse alphabetical order. Here's the question. What do you consider to be the greatest asset of the city of Pinkyville, and what are your plans to use that asset for the greater good? First up is Fran Thomas. You have a total time of two minutes.
I changed my topic this morning. I was going to say that our gas, water, and sewer department, because last year, we did $4.2 million worth of business with our gas, water, and sewer. Our biggest customer, the Correctional Center, did $1.6 million worth of business. They made 14 payments last year. At the present time, they are one month behind. They owe the city $279,000, but they are our best customer. We presently have $5.5 million in the bank. That's not exceptional, but it's comfortable. But what I'm really going to talk about is the spirit and the teamwork for the city of Pinkyville, the people of Pinkyville. I received an email in office from a Dr. Lawrence Lewin, urologist from California. He sent a copy of his, a picture of his Porsche with the license plate Tinkle, and a picture of his beautiful wife, and he said that he had played on the 1952 basketball team from Chicago that played against Pinkyville in Champaign at the state tournament. And he said he learned a life lesson from Pinkyville. He said when they were, they were playing Pinkyville, they laughed, they were offended. They said, "What kind of place is that? A bunch of hicks, a bunch of farmers." He said they rode the train to Champaign, and they went into that game, and he said they played a fast, firehouse-type of basketball. He said they played circles around Pinkyville until we got to halftime. And he said those Pinkyville boys, he said, "They just played, and they listened to their coach." And he said, "You know what? When we got on that train to go home," he said, "our heck, man." He said, "I learned a life lesson." This is a doctor from California, and I'd like to read just a little bit of the last letter that I was sent from him. He said, "Dear Francis..." Dear Francis, many thanks for your reply to my email. I should have started my quest a few months earlier to maximize the opportunity to meet a Panthers fan, but hearing from you after having been through the town and having seen the high school, the county courthouse, the signage, and having met one Pinkyville citizen in person who testified to the town's pride in its basketball team, I have confirmed the community's place in my memories of that fateful time. Please pass along my respect for the Panthers and how I, now 62 years ago and 2,500 miles away, and a mere spectator, have not forgotten the Panthers and the lesson they taught us. So I think that tells a story. I thank the Pinkyville people for our greatest asset.
Next up is David Stone. You have two minutes.
Well, I'm going to go back in time a little bit, just like, a little bit like Fran, as we look back, really go back through my lifetime. Sixty or seventy years, seemed like we had a lot of talented professionals. It was such a small town. We had doctors, lawyers, dentists, health conferences, pharmacists, some of these out there who put faces and names for these titles. A lot of builders and tradesmen, a lot of good business people, and a very good labor force. Some of the forward thinking people out of this group gave us a lot of gifts. They gave us our city park, our city lake, our gas system, our water and wastewater systems, Mardi Gras and mighty fine decorators, many businesses, and the list goes on and on and on, I'm always able to think of things out. A couple I really wanted to point out that don't get much attention, but are really great things that they did for us with our city lake. For the town this size, it's a perfect reservoir. It's, it has served us very well, and also our gases have served us financially very well. At that time, it became pretty much a self-sufficient community. Some of that stuff is still here. Some of those assets are still here, but they need maintaining. Some are gone forever, many need replaced. Times have changed, finances have changed, but the talent, talent to get things done, it seems is always a constant in Pinkyville, even in difficult times. Your thoughts and ideas need to be heard, and I'm always ready to listen. Tell me what you're thinking. Your serious heartfelt voice and willingness to pitch in is our greatest asset. Your presence tonight is testimony of your desire for a better Pinkyville. Thanks.
Next is Robert Spencer. Two minutes.
Pinkyville has some physical assets. We are standing in one of them right now. Pinkyville High School, the airport, the hospital, the new hospital that they've constructed now. What I say to you, our greatest asset of our people in this community, our greatest asset is our people in this community. Now, I want you to think about that. When I came here since 1977, it didn't take me long to realize that the people was the greatest asset, because I met people like Cabot McDaniel, that owned the Cabot McDaniel and Hard Rock School. And he also owned the heat and air industry. I met Mr. Pike, that owned Pike Field Home, Dick Pike. His son is currently owning that, that held a field home, carried Pinkyville, one, one coal mill, the one over there. Then I met a lady by the name of Mrs. Delkett. She was one that had the idea, now her charity has a current market. It did not take me long to realize that your greatest asset is the people in this community. How am I going to help this community? You need to realize that you cannot run a school without the people. You cannot run a hospital without the people, the doctors, and nurses. And you definitely cannot run an airport without the volunteer work. The people is the greatest asset in this community, and I am willing to work with the people anytime. I will have an open door policy that you can come to me anytime, day or night, don't tell a lie, but day or night, that you will be able to express. I will be able to work for each organization, group, and foundation. Thank you.
Next up is James Schillinger. Two minutes.
Thank you. We have something to say about the people in this town. The people, the people, that's what I talked about. A lot of towns can boast about having a highway, two highways, three highways. A lot of towns can boast about having a train, a track, which is a good town. We, a lot of towns can boast about having an airport, but I'll tell you one thing. I don't think any town can brag more about digging out of a poor economy than Pinkyville has. In the last few years, we have a bridal store's opened up, a car dealership is opened up, we now have a lumberyard. We have a hardware store that is drawing people from out of the community to buy feed and other goods, and for each dollar they spend, the town itself is getting more tax money in. More tax money, we make the circle, better government, and all that stuff. Now, none of these things would have happened if people were not dedicated to the town, both as a workforce, as a family-oriented community, and a community that is economically involved. We have done all that stuff. We had a prison open up. We have a hospital about ready to open. Then we had this new high school. And these things developed for only one reason: we care. So therefore, I think we're the best. Thank you.
Next up is Sammy Paradona. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I think our biggest, our greatest asset is our utility department like Francis Thomas Ciglo. About three weeks ago, you saw news, you can watch the news or read the paper, how Mount Vernon was trying to sell services, and they had to file a 500-page council meeting. Six years ago, five years ago, there was rumors about us thinking about selling hours, and then a few months ago, I heard some rumors again. But five or six years ago, I went and talked to the Commissioners who was on the council at the time, and told them how I felt about it, what I thought was right. But our systems, if you, this American Water Company is the one that comes in and takes these systems over, and I'm not sure if these are the communities, but I think it was Breeze, McLean'sboro, Greenvale, and West Plankton that actually had to come in and take over their system, and they don't spend any money on infrastructure. They dovetail it, and they try to save money. They offer your employees jobs for about $12 an hour and for maybe $15, $16, $18 an hour, more than I could stay. So you lose your employees. These people come in from out of town, they don't care what your water is like, as long as it passes the standards and everything. So, even though it's not the department I run for, I'm going to fight to keep our utility system, because I think we need to keep that, earn the money, she said, it generates. We don't have that other generator revenue hardly in the city, except sales tax, and of course, we don't have Walmart. And Walmart NewCoing makes more sales tax revenue than anybody, all the other stores put together, they spend it their coin. So I'm going to fight to try to keep our utility system. I'll only have one vote, but I think that's our greatest asset, and what I'm going to do is do everything I can to keep it if it comes down to that. Thank you.
Next is Joseph Holder. You have two minutes.
Well, I'll probably mirror what some of the other people said, but I'm a firm believer that the greatest asset that Pinkyville has is its citizens. I've had the opportunity over the years to see people step up. Every generation, there seems to be those people that step up and help get things done. The first time I witnessed this was when I was in high school. There was a group of fellows from the Chamber of Commerce, old Dr. Baker, Bob Walker, Vic Provarts, and people you probably don't know. They said, "We need to build a new factory. We don't have anybody to go in it, but we're going to build it, and we're going to give the money for the citizens of Pinkyville." So they said, "We'd like to issue whiff notes, and we'd like for people to step up and borrow almost $500. A whiff note if we will pay you back when and if we sell the factory." And I remember my folks setting up the kitchen tables and, you know, figuring out how to loan those fellows some money so they could help replace the jobs in the coal mines folks. Every generation, those people come along. I was involved in the chamber back in the 60s. I see this all the time. The spirit, the optimism, and the faith in the future, the citizens of Pinkyville have, this building we're in, it's a big obligation. To me, it's kind of scary, but there's people willing to step up and make something happen 10 years from now. They'll say, "Thank God, we have it." Same way with the hospital. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just proud to be part of this town, and I would serve the town in any way that I could, and I guess I really can't hardly figure what two minutes would be. I don't have enough time to tell another story, but I think you got the point. So thank you very much.
Next up is Ruben Davis. You have two minutes.
Thank you. And most of what I was going to say has already been said. The fact that Pinkyville as a workforce in general can accomplish virtually anything is thrown at it. You got any basic skill needed is available to you right here. The fact that we've got a brand new high school facility, the fact we'll soon have a new hospital, the recreational facility available for people here and around the area is all pretty much visible, just look around. I think the biggest thing is just taking, like mail or package, you can't mail something unless you make a complete package out of it. If you take Pinkyville as a whole and create a good package, packaged as such and displayed as such, then you can sell it, you can shape it, you can do anything you want to with it. You can make it grow, you can make it strengthen. I would hope with effort, good council, and good assistance behind there, we could package Pinkyville in such a fashion that we can make it sell, you know, make Pinkyville grow, make it inviting and interesting, and bring some other insight, you know, other interest back into the community. Thank you.
The next question is also for Ruben. Ruben Davis is running for Commissioner of Public Property. You have 90 seconds to answer this question. The question is, you mentioned issues with the city's infrastructure numerous times in the article published in the Pinkyville Press. What issue would you address first, and what specific steps would you take to fix the issue?
Well, my biggest concern is Pinkyville's immediate sewer treatment facility. Most anybody around knows that the structure was basically built back during WPA Day. How much longer it can stand on the same soil it's been on right now is unknown. Free money and this... Free money and this country is no longer really there, so you'll have to look elsewhere to find that. I still think that the primary need would be to address the sewer system, those lines in the ground, the treatment plant itself. Where can we find that money? I don't know. But if we don't look, if we don't ask the questions, we won't find it. The water system, we got a version of new, I'm thinking it's possibly twenty years old now. The water treatment plant itself should be relatively good. It's maintained and upgraded. And such as our lines in the ground, water lines, the same way, we've got a lot of new lines in the ground, but just there were room for more. Our gas system, from what I remember, is relatively good shape. Most of that is still been upgraded over time with the new plastic and poly lines. I think the primary need, the biggest cost of Pinkyville is that sewer treatment facility. Finding the money, finding the funds to stabilize that new treatment facility and maintain or upgrade or stabilize the main lines in the ground.
Our next question is for David Stone. David is running for commissioner of public property. You have ninety seconds to answer the question. You have a long list of completed projects during your eight years in the city council. Do you have any plans to update and/or improve the city pool and nearby park area if you like it?
The nearby park area, you're referring to as the city park, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the pool, we've been upgrading the pool. We got forty thousand dollar grant, uh, probably in two thousand nine, and we upgraded the pool to the two hundred and forty thousand dollars at that time. And I'm always, I guess, a little bit particular about the pool. The appearance of it, I'm going to look good. And we have tried to maintain the pool. We did quite a bit of work on the pumps two years ago, a main pump. We had to, we had to, it needed seals, and we spent some money on that. So pool's really in pretty good shape. There's really, uh, no beginning days with this one pool, other than maintaining what we got, keeping it fixed up. Uh, let's see, the city park. The city park is just where it is, the city park. We've got the walking path, which is, uh, we're going to have that sealed in a couple, as soon as the weather gets good, we're going to have to seal the walking path. We have the staff and the mowers, that's ongoing thing, the city park. We do need to do some painting. The gates on the graves, that paint's about once or so, three or four years old, but we need to do that. But as far as any major projects, the city park, we don't, that's not going anymore. We had, uh, we had some things going. Okay, we had some things going, but with the state situation, at least for now, that's pretty much, pretty much dead in the water for the time being. We'll see what happens.
Our next question is for Joseph Holder. Joe is running for commissioner of streets. You have ninety seconds to answer this question. You have indicated that you will seek grants in order to redo street signs, fix sidewalks, repair streets and alleys in your Pinkyville press interview. What specific grants are available to accomplish all of this? And what will your plans be if no grant funding is available?
Well, the, uh, the thing with grants are, they come from the federal government and the state government. I don't expect to get too much out of the state government right now, but on a federal level, they're planning some new programs coming out. One of the fellows that worked with me over the years when I was in office was in Washington, DC a couple of weeks ago, and he advised me of four different grants that are going to be available for different cities. They're getting ready to focus on infrastructure. And I can't really tell you if the grant for street signs is still available or not. It used to be. When I was in office before, there was a grant because it's a pretty expensive endeavor. But however, if it's not, then we will save money and change some street signs out every year. And that's pretty much my platform is, we start maintaining things a little bit better. And we just simply work on so many blocks a year as we have the money. And then over a period of years, sometimes five or ten years, you can see a real difference. And at one time, we would pave one street or two per year. And then over a period of six or eight years, why, people started beginning to see a real difference. And that's the way I would approach that. Sorry, that's the best answer I can give you about grants.
Our next question is for Sammy Peridada. He's running for commissioner of streets. You stated in your Pinkyville press interview that you plan to keep up sidewalks, streets, and alleyways in the city while trying to fix previous problems. Do you anticipate the need to employ additional workers to get all of this accomplished? Or would you plan to outsource or bin out the work?
Well, I definitely like to hire some more people. I don't see that happening until we come up with some funding. But we have two people in the street department right now. And as anybody knows, you can't get a lot accomplished with two people. And if one person calls off or says they're on vacation, they're down to one. So there's not much you can do by yourself. What I'd like to do is possibly for a six-month period, maybe May to October, because we always have to clean up after the morning, or all that night, till two or three o'clock in the morning, I'd like to hire a couple of people with twenty hours a week that would report time wages, I think it might be ten dollars an hour, the city pays, and help do the sidewalks, possibly help do some projects because then you got four people, and if one person calls off, you still got three. So I'd like to do something like that if the money's there. I'd have to look at the budget, get the previous commitments that got set up, if it's approved during the next month, and go from that. Sidewalks, alleyways, streets, you know, you need your motorfield tax for the streets. Somebody just informed me tonight that in the front page of the paper now, we're going to lose two thousand inmates now due to prison of our population. And like when I was in the council, we got something like a hundred and ten dollars a person for motorfield tax. And of course, those guys can't drive, so we've got a lot of money to fix streets. And if we lose that money, that's going to hurt us immensely. Probably fifteen hundred of those two thousand could count. And the law, I don't know how they changed it, but I have to look into that. The law says, "When you lay your head, that's where you reside." Now, that's why we got the motorfield tax money. So I have to look into that. But, Tom, sorry. But that's all, I just might just have to look into that because that's going to hurt us on the street point. Sidewalk money, come out of the front, you can't use that for motorfield tax for sidewalks and rock and alleys and mailboxes.
And I would like to clarify, Ruben Davis, if that happened, the initial time you called, if you've got a thought that you would like to complete, feel free to complete, you know, your next thought, that's a hundred percent fine. Our next question is for James Schiller. He is running for commissioner of public safety. You have ninety seconds to answer the question. Do you feel that it would be a challenge to hold off a sober department that you once worked for? If so, how do you plan to overcome this challenge? And if not, why not?
It will be a challenge to a certain extent because you do have friends that you have to make sure that everybody is treated fairly. But it's also a great advantage. I know how the department works. I know some places where we can improve. We need to make sure everybody is treated fairly. And we also have to, and I learned working with the department, our job is to make the percentage of people happy. We can't make everybody happy because if somebody comes to us, uh, there's grass in the street. Okay, we need to take care of that. We take care of it, we make that person happy. If we take care of it, we may, the person put the grass in the street upset. And my, I think, big asset is working as a teacher and dealing with parents, which sometimes you don't always be happy. And as a policeman, you don't always be happy. I learned that if you treat people with respect, you can usually get them to compromise and we can get the job done.
Our next question is for Robert Spencer. Robert is running for mayor. You have ninety seconds to answer the question. In your interview with the County Journal, you mentioned Pinkyville getting a clothing store. What specific steps would you personally take that would entice a store owner to open in Pinkyville? And what storefront location is currently unoccupied would be suitable for that type of business?
Yes, that is one thing that we need, is a clothing store. If you want to buy pair of shoes or a even suit or whatever, you have to go out of town. We like to be self-sufficient to a certain extent. Right now, we are not self-sufficient. To ask your person, are they able to take the site? Not at least to take the time. How is that going to entice someone if they're easy? Number one, what competition do they have? They don't have it. When they see that they don't have the competition, they will be eager to come here. And at the same time, just came out of the press, this is the number four for the most affordable, less affordable state. So we have all of these good opportunities. Pinkyville have to market this thing in order to break anything in. And that's what I will be doing. I will be marketing Pinkyville because Pinkyville is a great town. That's how I would frame the story.
Our next question is for Fran Thomas. Fran is running for mayor. You have ninety seconds to answer the question. In both articles published in the County Journal and the Pinkyville Press, you've mentioned your history as clerk being a learning experience for you. What is one specific example of a mistake the past councils have made? And how would you have handled it differently? And was one positive thing you have taken away from a past council decision?
That's a big one.
To clarify, I did not create these questions. For the candidates, I have not. I like, I have not created.
These have opened my walls just about. So this is a step, when I go out to the parking lot tonight. Okay. I have learned, and everyone makes mistakes, but I have learned from some of their mistakes. And I think I used this as an example in another meeting. The Tums Building, several years ago, when it originally, when the Tums plant moved and the city took that plant back. And that was just an expense. It was a terrible expense. And we spent a long time before we were able to sell that building. And all that time, we had to pay taxes on that building because it wasn't used as a municipal government facility. We had to pay insurance. We had to pay security. We had to, we worried about that building. David Stone, day and night, was called out about that building because he was public property commissioner. When we sold that building, it was such a relief. So I think I had learned from that experience that, number one, I didn't get a vote. I didn't, you know, I didn't have any input, I just could sit there and listen. And I wanted to have a vote. And number two, that even educated and well-informed people sometimes make mistakes. And you have to realize, when you make a mistake, sometimes you have to say, "I made a mistake. Now what do I do to correct it?" And they did, and then they sold that building. And this last transaction, which also fell through, but it wasn't our banking any longer, it was somebody else's, and we got to sit back. We helped in the form of two hundred thousand dollars, but it wasn't our big expense. It wasn't something that kept us in wait.
It is now time for a ten minute break. We do ask all the members of the audience in attendance, if you do have any questions specifically that you would like answering. Again, there are no cards and pens back over the table, feel free to write your questions down. Our first question is for David Stone and Ruben Davis. Mr. Stone, you will answer first. Mr. Davis, you will answer second. Your total time to answer this question is ninety seconds. Mr. Stone, you were both elected in two thousand seven. Do you believe your service during that term warrants a position on the city council now? And if so, why?
Well, I do. One thing a lot of people don't realize about, you know, the beginning of being a member of the city council, is that there's a learning curve. Takes you a while to get up to speed with what's going on. I think anybody here will tell you that. I know that, I'm trying to think back when I first started, but we were faced with a lot of things that hadn't had any money spent on because there wasn't any money available. We had a lot of problems, a lot of problems with our infrastructure. Our sewer hadn't been, pretty much, hadn't, our collection system hadn't been touched in years and years. I do know that there was some work done out across the tracks in the Farquhar Ground Area when I was a kid, seventeen years old, I remember that. But our infrastructure was in seriously bad shape. We came to realize that we needed a new sewer plant. You know, what do you do for a sewer plant, twelve million dollars? Those are the things that I was faced with. And I didn't expect all of that. I sat down and looked through our finances, and we were virtually on our backs, as Joe will also tell. So we've got a lot of work to do and no money to do it with, and we start from there.
Next up, the same question is Ruben Davis. You were both elected in two thousand seven. Do you believe your service during that term warrants a position on the city council now? And if so, why?
I do. In two thousand seven, as Mr. Stone said there, that council faced a lot of difficulties. And even though at that point, the term I served was short-lived, I learned quite a bit of things that I did during that service and things that I should have done but did not. I went from being an employee to being a leader, which I hadn't had a chance to transition into doing necessarily. So I feel this time, with knowing what I'd done then and knowing what was involved at that point and being aware of watching what's been done with council since then and learning from both those experiences, I'm probably more happy and more prepared now to deal with what they throw up and what's waiting in mind than what I would back in two thousand seven. Thank you.
Our next question is for Sammy Peridada and Joseph Holder. Sammy Peridada will answer first. Joe Holder will answer second. You will have a time of ninety seconds for this question. What are your plans for leaf and limb removal for residents? Include any pricing and details associated with your plan?
Well, personally, I don't rake my leaves. I kind of have to, thought my brother had, I didn't put them there, so let them stay there, you know what I mean? But I wasn't real happy, we had a three dollar fifty or whatever it was surcharge to your bill because I didn't put any leaves in the street. I know it takes time and labor to rake those leaves, I don't know, sort those leaves up, supplement that truck and dispose of. I looked at that, I know that's recently been taken off of everybody's bill, but I think they would need to pick them up again. I just need to look and see how costly it could be and possibly if we could charge people if they want to be picked up, you know, let them know ahead of time that we will pick them up for this amount of money or something like that. But, you know, they're nice or they play on the street, so I think they do need to be picked up, but I don't think everybody needs to be charged that doesn't have a tree or a yard, and all of a sudden you're charged just like you get city services for leaf removal and stuff like that. That's what I found to do is possibly charging people if they want to be picked up.
Mr. Holder, you have ninety seconds.
Would you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What are your plans for leaf and limb removal for residents? Include any pricing and details associated with your plan?
Somehow I thought that question might come up.
Somehow I thought that question might come up. Well, after being involved with the council, and trying two, two or three different approaches to the leaf collection, uh, here's, uh, my conclusion of what I think would be best. Everybody loves the leaves until they fall. You know, then nobody wants them. But the reality is, the street department is responsible for the streets and the sidewalk and the drainage. The leaves get in the drain lines, they stop things up. The city is going to just have to buy the bulb and do the job, and get these leaves picked up. I know it's a big challenge. I've talked to, uh, some of the people on the street department, and, uh, but, uh, here's, here's the rub. There has to be some control. Uh, in the past, we had folks that would have a tree cut down in their yard, and have the contractor stack all the, the tree at the curb for the city to haul away. And, you know, we can't do that. You know, they're going to have to get their contractor to haul their tree off. So, if a limb breaks off in your yard, yeah, whoop, I would intend to pick it up. If you rake your leaves to the curb, uh, we'll pick them up. That would be my position on this, for the beauty of the town, and to keep the drainage in order, so we don't flood out if we have some big rains. That's pretty much concludes, I think, you know, what I have to say.
Our next question is for James Schiller. You will have ninety seconds to answer the question. What is your vision for the police department, including the ideal size regarding manpower, including supervisors, full-time officers, part-time officers, and auxiliary officers?
Number one, I will not want to give rid of anybody we have now. I would like to see a smaller police department, and get there through attrition. Um, I think, uh, supervisors, supervisors go. We do not need two supervisors on day shift, in my opinion. We can have our two supervisors overlap, because that's going to happen to each other. You know, A hasn't known what B is doing. If we have the two supervisors, that will guarantee double coverage most of the day, from about seven o'clock in the morning till two, depending on, 11 or 12 o'clock at night, which during the week, that's fine. Um, part-time, they're great. You can't beat part-time police officers. I know a guy who did it for about ten years, and he was really a good guy. But, but part-time police officers have a definite place in the department. We cannot fully fund people to come in and work a four-hour day. Our police officers now are twelve-hour shifts. It is my personal opinion that twelve hours is too long. I, because if you're doing something at eleven, at eleven and a half hours into your shift, and something happens, you go home. Okay, thank you. No, but if something happens mentally, you can't handle it. And that's the reason I would like to see shorter hours, and we can do that with part-time officers. Thank you.
Our next question is for Fran Thomas and Robert Spencer. Thomas will answer first. Spencer will answer second. You will have ninety seconds to answer the question. What relationship do you plan to have with the Chamber of Commerce? Specifically, do you attend, do you plan to attend and show public support for the initiatives the Chamber is working on? Also, do you plan to attend or appoint a council representative for chamber meetings? And are you aware of any of the Chamber's current initiatives?
Well, I think the Chamber does a wonderful, wonderful thing for the city of Pinkyville. And you just, they are, you just can't say thank you enough for the members of the Chamber. Every year, at Martin Barrow, when you see those ladies and those gentlemen out, and it doesn't matter what the weather is, and they're out marking all the spaces, they come to the council meetings, and they ask for permission to have the frame, and they get their certificates of insurance, and they are dedicated people. And yes, I think the city of Pinkyville should work with the Chamber. And if they would want one of our members to be appointed to attend chamber meetings, I think it'd be wonderful. I think the foundation as well. Uh, and I used to attend the foundation meetings. And in fact, I hosted, uh, one of the, uh, events at the city hall. I think those agencies, I think are, the people who attend those meetings and belong to those associations, it's a wonderful thing, and I would love to see the city work with them. And, and even to the flower pops with the IS, they have placed around the town. You know, it's those kind of things. The, uh, Christmas decorations, uh, the, the forest behind them, having the Santa put on. And I think the city should work hand in hand with the Chamber and with the foundation.
Got it.
Mr. Spencer.
Truly, I don't think that most people realize exactly what the Chamber does, and how much that they does for the city. As I told you before, I would have an overall policy, and I would work with all organizations, including Chamber and the foundation. Number one, yes, I plan on being an active member, yet I will attend your meeting, just as I tell you, wait. It's, it's a leader you have to really look for. When you look forward, there's people that you have to work with, and people that you need. This organization has proven itself, and definitely, we will be working with the Chamber in all of the foundation. There's no doubt, and I will be at your meeting, just tell me.
The next question is for Ruben Davis and David Stone. At this time, Ruben Davis will answer first. David Stone will answer second. You'll have ninety seconds to answer the question. Do you have a maintenance plan in mind, or an upgrade plan in mind for our current infrastructure, specifically the sewer system?
Now, right now, I have no idea exactly where the primary problem spots are. I remember some problem spot, but some of them, as far as I know, have been addressed in the past eight years. Uh, like I said before, I've been gone from the city for about ten years, so what has been done, and what's left to do, I really have no idea. Uh, I know that there's been, um, camera work done throughout the sewer system, different places. There's been some smoke, uh, work done to determine these places. I'd like to have the time to go back over all those reports, and find where the most, uh, extreme problem is at, address that, and take it from there. I know over the twenty-six and a half years I was an employee before, that there had probably been possibly as many as six or seven different tests with smoke and with cameras done throughout the city. And I've always had a question as to why would the same test be ran repeatedly and paid for, when initially they know where the bad spots were at? Instead of paying out more money to test a second time, go in and fix that, and then test for further damage after that? So, to answer the question, I don't know. I would like the time to prioritize, if I know where they're at, and just, uh, go ahead and from there. Thank you.
Mr. Stone, do you have a maintenance plan in mind, or an upgrade plan in mind for our current infrastructure, specifically the sewer system?
Yes, I do. Uh, we've cameraed and smoked the entire system. We've seen that grant, and we've got pictures, and, uh, we've got a little book with pictures of every sewer in town. We know where the bad spots are. Two of the worst spots are, have already been repaired. With the help of grant money, we had to put some of our own money with it, but with the help of grant money, we're able to repair two of the worst spots. Uh, spots where we had basements flooding, spots flooding, spots where we knew the sewer at the beginning was in worse condition. We've applied for another grant, which is, if we're all the sewer goes, it, it all goes to this spot, and where it goes with the plant. To me, it's the most important. We applied for a major grant last year, didn't get the grant. But we've got everything, all of, there was a lot of preliminary work. We've got all that preliminary work done. We're ready to reapply. The applications will be done in July, and the applications for that grant will be done. That's very important to us. We've got to get to the plant before we can, before we can, before we can utilize the plant. Right now, we don't even, the inflow is bad. We don't even know what our flow rate is, so we couldn't build a plant if we wanted to. But we've already got some preliminary works, some paperwork going in preparation for applying for grant for the plant. Once we get this infrastructure, get the pipes in place, and we've got one more spot that I want to dig. So, yeah, we've got planning.
Our next question is for Joseph Holder and Sammy Peridada. Mr. Holder will answer first, and Mr. Peridada will answer second. You have a total time of ninety seconds to answer this question. Mr. Holder, both of you mentioned the city government doing things they should not be doing. What is an example of something they should not, what is something that should not have been done, and how would you have done it differently?
Well, a lot of the things that, that have been attempted and not worked, uh, we learned from. You know, I, I'll take my share of the blame for a lot of things that didn't go right. But we learned from each mistake that we made, so we didn't make the same mistake twice. I really can't tell you something that the city is involved in that it should not be involved in. Now, I just draw a blank there. Uh, the police department takes care of public safety. Uh, the street department takes care of, uh, the job that it's assigned, the utility department. I just draw, I really draw a blank on that. So, uh, I'm not going to waste the taxpayers' time trying to make something better. So, thank you very much.
Could you repeat that question?
Yes, sir. The question is, both of you mentioned the city government doing things they should not be doing. What is an example of something that should not have been done, and how would you have done it differently?
Well, I basically never say that, but, uh, I'll, I'll add something to it, if I said, I said, uh, I, I think, uh, a lot of times, you pick out a document paper, but I read one of my mom and dad's on the squad of Pinkyville Press, we call it. And a lot of times, you pick up the paper, it's a black mark for Pinkyville, because there's been executive session meeting that wasn't properly done right, or wasn't announced ahead of time, or something was said that shouldn't have been said, or went to the executive session for the wrong reasons. And so, I think, there's things you have to do with executive session, or, you know, discipline employees, hiring, or anything like that, but, you know, do it the right way, don't eat yourself in fine, and then, um, you know, I'm not running for mayor, of course, but, uh, if I ever run for mayor and be elected, I want the police chief to let me know when Santa Claus is coming to town, so that we don't have a bunch of trouble with that one. Okay? Because that's kind of stuff that, to me, is just a joke. Thank you.
Our next question is for James Schiller. You have ninety seconds to answer. Do you have a plan to lower or better our ISO rating with the fire department? If so, what are some ideas you have? And if not, why not?
I really don't know a lot about that. We have maybe Jim Velo, and probably get in with the rural fire department board a little bit. Uh, I do know that he needs equipment, equipment, and equipment, and, you know, that's expensive, but I really can't answer the question. No, I'm sorry.
There, there is additional clarification on the high ISO. Uh, ISO collects and analyzes data using a fire suppression rating schedule, and assigns a public protection classification from one to 10. Class one is a superior property fire protection. Class 10 doesn't meet ISO's minimum criteria. The program provides objective, countrywide standard that helps fire departments in planning and budgeting for facilities, equipment, and training. Many times, a lowered ISO is a consideration factor in homeowners' insurance premiums. Pinkyville is currently at a five rating. So, the question is, do you have a plan to lower or better our ISO rating with the fire department?
I would think if we meet with the fire chief, and the state fire marshal's office, we could do, get a plan of action that would help us to lower the ISO to improve the rating. And also, I think we could work with the insurance companies. And they would probably help fund studies, and also take consults on what we can do to improve the rating. Okay?
The next two questions are for both of our parole candidates. The first question is for Robert Spencer and Fran Thomas. Mr. Spencer will answer first. Mr. Thomas will answer second. You have a ninety-second time limit. Mr. Spencer, what specific plan or plans do you have to encourage home and business owners to improve dilapidated homes and buildings?
Speak first, please.
What specific plan or plans do you have to encourage home and business owners to improve dilapidated homes and buildings?
Number one, I think that you, we need to look at our, our zone. And, and when, when you look at our zone, uh, that should, everything should be brought up to the thing specification. But this is what you have to look at. If this is going to cause a severe hardship on an individual to upgrade their home, then we should look at something where we could help them out in some way or another. Okay? If their home is not there and need to be torn down, we need to take action to do that, and, and also. But, as a plan as such, I don't have a plan. I know that it can be done. And we should work with the people, instead of saying, "This house or this house should go." You should work with the people, not get them. If we cannot salvage the situation, then, yes, that's the last resort. It's going to tear down.
Well, as far as the businesses, we have a facade improvement grant. And I believe that's $25,000 as the maximum. Is that right, Karen?
It's up to 35.
Up to 35? Okay. And the city will participate with the business to do improvements to the facades and the buildings. Uh, and I think that's a wonderful incentive. And we've had several businesses in the city of Pinkyville that have taken advantage of that. And in fact, we have a business right now that's preparing to take a building on South Main Street. And they're using not only the facade improvements, they're using the business district, sales tax money. And they're going to take this, and they're going to put three more businesses. We're going to take a piece of property that is not on the real estate tax registers at this time, and it's going to be three businesses moved into that building. The building is going to be rented, and the city is helping them to return about $35,000. And that's a nice incentive. Uh, as far as homeowners, people are very possessive of their homes. And what we see as an eyesore, they see as the palace. And, and you know, I think you probably all know who several of those people are. And the city has gone several times and assisted some of them in, in moving some of their things around, and they just immediately go out and start collecting them.
Done.
The next question is also for the mayor candidates. Uh, Mr. Thomas will have the opportunity to answer first on this one. You do have ninety seconds to answer the question. We all know that it's important, it's important... We all know that it's important to support our local economy. How would you encourage shopping locally for our residents who commute to work versus shopping in the city where they work?
Oh, that's another hard one. But I think we have wonderful grocery stores, and we have wonderful restaurants, and we have lovely gas stations and convenience stores in Pinkyville. And I can't imagine, you know, I don't either. I am very close to where I work. But to me, it would be so much easier to fill my car in my hometown. And when I leave in the morning, I would have a full tank of gas. To buy my groceries in my hometown, where my sales tax will help with the city, run the city. It's, you have people that you know. When you go to the store, you see your neighbors. It's not only just a shopping experience, it's a social experience. And I think that we have lovely places in Pinkyville to shop. And I know we don't have merchandise as far as a clothing store. But I've been through a clothing store. My mother owns a clothing store in Pinkyville. And you can't be in business just to do good for the community. You are in business to make money. You're in business to support yourself. So you have to be able to have a profit. And so many people, at IDOC, I learned thirty-two years ago when I started working for the city. And the engineer from IDOC at that time, it was even before Charlie Rainwater. And he explained to me, the better your highways, the more likely the people are to travel, to go to larger communities to do the shopping. And we have really highways and people traveling.
Okay, we do have time now for some additional questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We have ninety seconds, Mr. Spencer. Again, the question is, we all know that it's important to support our local economy. How would you encourage shopping locally for our residents who commute to work versus shopping in the city where they work?
Well, you know, people do things to shop for convenience. When I was working every morning, they had taken the Perry County marketplace. I was in that every morning, getting my lunch. That's one of my major things. And I believe that we should shop in, in our hometown. Areas of the tax will come back to the hometown. There are things that we don't have that they have to go out of town for. I believe that even though if we have highways, people go there just because they want to go there, not necessarily saying they don't want to shop in their own town. But I support shopping in our town, in what's available. You should shop here, and I encourage you to shop here. But if we don't have it, we don't have it. And I think that's a lot of a problem. We don't have a lot of things that people go for. And that's, that's what my argument. Thank you.
Okay, we do have time for some additional questions. There will be, all of these questions are for the mayor. The next question will be answered first by Mr. Spencer, second by Mrs. Thomas. You do have one minute to respond. What would you like to tell the candidates for city council about what you want or need from your city government in the next term as mayor?
Number one, I would tell my city council that we need to work together. That's what I would tell them. We are here to represent the people. And in order to do that efficiently, we have to work together. Now, everything is not going to go your way, but let's do what's best for the community. And that's what I would tell them. To represent the people that put you in office, that's what you should do. Now, you're not going to sit by everybody. But if you do, then you're not working together. I would tell you that. So let's work together, and let's sit down and see and develop a long-range plan for this community, and proceed with that long-range plan, and work together to achieve that. That's what I would tell them.
What we have is almost unique in form of government in the state of Illinois. The last I checked, there were only five communities in the state of Illinois that had our type of government. We have a commission for a government where people run for a specific office. So each person runs for the office that they feel are most suitable, and the office that they are the most adaptable to, and the most, they have the interest in. So therefore, we have people who have an office, and they look after their department. And while you might think that that divides the council, it doesn't. Because you have people who have their interests, and then when they work together. But in my thirty-two years with the city, I think all of our councils have worked well together. And when they did have differences, that's part of the democracy, that's part of the government. That's what makes things work properly, because different...
The first question is for Fran Thomas. I don't know what I was supposed to say. I apologize for that.
I'm recovering from a broken ear.
How many grants have you worked on in your thirty-two years in city government?
Well, in my thirty-two years at the city, we have had over twenty-three million dollars in grants. All that money has gone through my office. We have had grants that, we have a new water treatment plant. We have grants for new gas lines. We were able to keep Cooper B Line here, who's recently with grants. We have a department now that, that employee, that's what she does. She works on grants. And recently, she gave me a spreadsheet of the grants that she's worked on in just the last few years. And she's had excess of three million dollars that she has brought in. So, I don't know the number, but somebody went to my city hall, and I have spreadsheets that has every grant, has every grant number, has the date that it started, the date that it ended, and the project that it worked on. When Thomas was still in production...
You can finish that off.
Well, when Thomas was still in production, we were able to keep those jobs here for probably another fifteen or twenty years with the grants, where we expanded that. And those were many jobs, and they were from surrounding areas. So I have worked on a lot of, I personally don't do the grants, but I have worked with people who do.
This is the final question of the question and answer session. That is for Mr. Spencer. Mr. Spencer, will whole rural come to Pinkyville?
If I had my say, no.
At this time, we will give each candidate the opportunity to give their closing statement. So at this time, we will also be running in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Davis, running for commissioner of public property, closing comments, please.
Not sure how to close that one. I still feel one of the biggest things that not necessarily been ignored, but has been overlooked over the years, again, is Pinkyville's overall infrastructure. Utilities actually, we got a marvelous city park out there. It's not necessarily been fully explored and utilized completely. The pool, although being maintained year to year, has not been in-depth, caught up with from year to year. A major problem that might come up. You have the city lake out there, which years ago was let go. When I was an employee, we went in there and mowed all the buck brush trees with most of four inches around just to reclaim the bolt launch area. I still feel that there's a time that there could have been camping sites, small turn rough campings, camping, whatever could be done out there. The fact that our hospital is where it is now, I feel that the city should have been more involved with the old facility, maintaining it, keeping the certification on it, where we would be where we're at now. I would hope that this council, or any city council, could be more involved maintaining what they got, instead of having to constantly look into spending more to just give a little bit. And, you know, we hope maybe I could be a part of accomplishing that. Thank you.
Next closing comments is Joseph Holder, running for commissioner of streets and public improvements.
Well, I think most of you know me already. And I've always been proud to be a part of Pinkyville. And I've always tried to be engaged in the community in some positive way. And that's the endeavor that I'm looking forward to now, to be engaged with the community to make it better. And I guess if I had one thing to say, is I've always tried to make myself available, not only to the council members that I've had the honor to serve with, but members of the community. And most everyone knows where I live anyway. You just come down to my house, and that happens. And that's fine. Because we're here to try to serve you. If you're not interested in serving the people of Pinkyville, don't run for the city council, you know? For goodness sakes. Because, you know, that's part of service, community service. And you can't really put a price on it. Either you love it, and you love the community, or you just don't want to do it. So I happen to just love the community and serve it in any way that I can, as I have in the past. And I feel like that in this office, I might be able to make a positive impact in some way. And the experience that I've had might be able to help some of the new council members in some way. Thank you very much.
Next closing statements are for Sammy Paradada. He's running for commissioner of streets and public improvements.
Well, I'm running for streets and improvements to begin and follow up again. I was on the council like a seventy-four, ninety-five, oh, three, and I thought I did a good job. I was solid there. But obviously, you run for election, sometimes you don't win. So I didn't win. So I'm going to try and get back on the council. I enjoy helping people. I enjoy seeing things accomplished. I don't need the city's insurance. I have two insurances for health, including from the state of Illinois, and I have Blue Cross Blue Shield, the toll line. And I don't need, I'm not trying to get any more retirement, my own IMRF. If I get elected, I will be contributing to IMRF. So I just want to get involved. I want to help. I want to see things accomplished. The two previous councils I was with, they worked well together. I think anybody running here would be good to work with. Joe's a good person, too. Just because I run this, gets it. We've done spoke. There's no party to it either way. However it happens, we both ran and won, and ran and lost. So we know what it's like. We just put our name out there, hope that people vote for our side. Thank you for anybody that could support me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next closing comments will be by James Schiller. He's running for commissioner of public health and safety.
Like Sam, I'm running, and the rest of the council, ready to serve the people. And I also will not be participating in the health program. I have good insurance. I'm lucky enough to have it. And I'll save you people five hundred dollars a month. Okay? Why do I want to do it? Earlier, I talked about the hard work of the people to get involved and working for businesses and recreational things. The people of this town, I think, will really keep working for betterment if they know they are appreciated. In newer government, sometimes we kind of overlook the people. It's my belief that we have to, one, keep executive sessions to a minimum, that we have to be open to the people. And probably, it's our own fault to a certain extent that we don't tell the people enough of what we do, and why we do it. We're going to pick up, they said, pick up leaves. I think that's a great thing. But let's tell the people, you know, we are picking up the leaves for a small team, three, whatever works out. And we are doing this as a service to you and to keep our streets better. We don't need to say, we're doing it, and let these people then say, well, gee, what is there to spend my money for? Not any reason. Let the people know what we're doing, be open. That's the main thing I'm going for. Thank you.
Next closing comments will be right by Robert Spencer, running for mayor.
I moved here, so, in eighteen seventy-seven. At that time, I was not married. Since then, I married my wife, Bernie, after five years. She's my high school sweetheart in high school. And after being, being here, we had three, three children, Daniel, Melissa, Danielle, and Kimberly. You probably know Kimberly because she's a track star. She won for state champion in one hundred meter, two in two hundred meter. So this, this is home now. This is home now. After working forty to two years, three, eight of those years in Perry County, working what can land on throughout the county, working for municipality in Perry County. This is home. So when I retired, I said that I want to keep serving the people, because I serve. And one thing about serving the people, it is a thing. Because people is good. Serving people is good. You might not believe that, but it's true. And so I enjoy serving the people. Now, what I'm looking for, I am looking to improve this small group of little town of Pinkyville. I am looking to bring small businesses in, such as the one Miss Tom mentioned that's just going to be started. That is what I am looking for. Three, four hundred job facilities, I'm not looking for that. Because we in our community, we can not expect to get there. We don't have that much to offer. But we can bring in small businesses that will be convenient and have the things that we need here in town. What I mean by here in town, we can be self-sufficient. You don't have to go out of town to buy a pair of shoes, a shirt. That's what I mean by being self-sufficient. We have what you need. Now, if there is something special, yes, we are going to go look at for it. But I would like to keep here in town. So I am willing to work with all of the council. And I can say I will do the best job that I possibly can. Thank you.
The next closing comments will be by David Stone. He's running for commissioner of public property.
Much time. I run for office in Pinkyville because I love the city of Pinkyville. I put a lot of time into this job. My wife will tell you that I get real upset when things don't go the way I like them to go. I guess everybody doesn't want to do things the way I want to do them. It bugs me a little bit. I don't know. But I give everything I've got. I do have plans. My biggest in-your-face thing is infrastructure. And we have a plan. All of those plans are contingent upon how successful we are, coming up with money. Everything you do is a very expensive proposition. And I don't need back any help or assistance. And we're going to do that. And, uh, I don't need back any help or assistance, and we're going to do that. I guess I got, I was a little bit upended with the, all the, all the infrastructure stuff and all the intense infrastructure questions that I expected. I got a while ago what, you know, about the fairgrounds and swimming pool. Uh, we, we do maintain a pool, it requires considerable amount of maintenance, but in the scheme of things, it's really no big deal. You just know you're going to have to, you're going to have, you're going to have issues with the swimming pool. And it's, it's never anything really serious. The city park is just that, the city park. I do the best I can to maintain it. Uh, freshmen helped me out a bunch. Uh, that freshman, and the fair also. I mean, we've got some great people to work out there. I was talking about people, I don't know, but these guys have done a lot for, for our city. That's really all I have. I, I enjoy what I do.
The next closing comments will be by Fran Thomas, running for mayor.
Well, I have been quoted in the newspaper and on Pinkyville books as having said, and I did say it, that I don't have a chip on my shoulder, I don't have a crush, and I don't have any family to honor, I don't have any ulterior motives. But I have 32 years of experience, and I probably know more about the city of Pinkyville than anybody else on this earth. And I love the city of Pinkyville, and I can't imagine not being involved in the day-to-day government movements and activities. I really would enjoy being mayor. I think I have a lot to offer, and I would love to be the mayor.
And that concludes our 10 to 4 of this evening. I would like to take a moment on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce to thank you guys sincerely out of, out of our hearts from all the chamber board for taking time, putting yourself on public display, and saying some of your ideas. I know that's not the easiest thing in the world to do, so from the chamber, I would like to give you a sincere heartfelt thank you. I'd also like to give all the concerned voters of Pinkyville another sincere thank you for coming out and taking time out of your evening to listen to these folks who, I think sincerely, all of their hearts are definitely in the right spot, trying to do everything that they can to help our city. And it means a lot that you guys will come out here and be involved in this process. So thank you very much. We'll see you later.